Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the BFUHS School Board Meeting.
All right. It's 6:30. I will call the Bellas Falls Union High School Reorganization Board Meeting to order. And adjustments to the agenda? Just like to point out a couple. We don't need to do D and E, four D and E. That was already appointed, but I mean, it's Kathleen Nehoff. And then for M, the only adjustment I would like to offer is adopting Robert's Rules of Order for small boards, because you are a small board. And then you do have an open position that could be appointed tonight if you wanted to, which could be a floor N.
Appoint of order, Mr. Superintendent. Unless the Rock Clerk is here, that appointment, if this board doesn't, will not actually be able to take votes in action items, because that appointee will not be sworn in.
Correct, yes.
And I believe everybody else has been sworn in?
Everyone has been sworn in, correct? Yep. Checking with the boss back there.
That's good.
All right. Any other adjustments?
I had one small one. We don't have a pledge on here, but I guess this isn't Molly's meeting quite yet.
If everyone's comfortable, we can add the, we can add it. No, I'm happy to add it to the, to the agenda. And we could take a moment and say the pledge. No objections?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, my nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
All right. Any other adjustments? Communication, public comment? There are none. We will go into the reorganization. I will like to offer acceptance of nominations for chairperson. June.
I would like to nominate Molly Bannock as chairperson.
Second.
Jason has a second. Any discussion?
There are no nominations.
I was gonna ask if there was a, or no discussion. Any other nominations?
Mr. Superintendent, I move that nominations be closed and direct you to cast one ballot for Bannock as chair.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so move. So I will cast one ballot for, close nominations and cast one ballot for Molly Bannock. And we'll just do a roll call on that. So Jason?
Yes.
Darcy?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
He can't vote.
I know.
Looking away, I can't do that. Molly? Rob?
Yes.
All right. Muscle memory. Sorry. Madam Chair? Your, your?
Can I borrow somebody's agenda?
Yeah.
Because I brought this one, so I can see what we did last year. That's perfect. Thank you. Okay. Need, um...
There's a clean one.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much. We need nominations for a vice chair. June?
I nominate Jason Terry. Can I get seconded?
I don't hear any other nominations, so I would like to move nominations be closed and direct the chair to cast one ballot for Jason Terry as vice chair.
Second?
A second.
Thank you. We have Jason nominated for vice chair, and we'll just go around the room. Jason?
Yes.
Darcy? June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have a nomination for clerk? June Streeter?
I'd like to nominate Darcy Sprague, as she has a graduate this year.
That means you get to sign the diplomas.
All right. We'll hope he graduates.
That wasn't a brilliant, horrible, zombie.
Somebody said it's gonna be mine.
Yes, that, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Tanya, would you like to close those nominations?
Sure. I'm not sure how to do that. Cast one ballot for Darcy?
Nope. So you're gonna close nominations for Darcy for clerk?
Okay.
And then we're gonna run around?
And I seconded it?
Okay.
Closing of the...
Perfect.
Jason?
Yes.
And Darcy?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay. Appoint district clerk.
Nope.
So that was done, because that's Kathleen.
Correct.
Okay. Appoint district treasurer.
Kathleen also.
Okay. Election of assistant treasurer. What does the assistant treasurer do?
The, the other boards have chosen not to appoint someone or elect someone at this time. Basically, we ran into an issue last year when we, when the business manager left, then we had to sign over, change things over with the banks, so that like I could sign off and do things like that. And, and one district, their treasurer was out of state, so we had to rifle through some things and find out. And I think, I think actually you were still the name, the Westminster, that's how we were able to figure that out.
Yeah. I ended up having my name on something that I already got there, but I had to go sign off at the bank.
Yeah, so...
That's all I did last year as assistant treasurer, was sign the signature card at Mascoma. That was, it was tough.
So, right now, I mean, that can be done at a later date. It doesn't have to be done tonight, so...
So do, what I'm hearing is, we don't need it? Or you do need it in case something happened to Jim?
We, we would need, we would need it at that time, but we could call an emergency meeting also, so... If that's the only responsibility, should we nominate that person now? And that way, it's, it's real clear.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was just... Madam Chair, would you like to nominate Rob Welch?
Why didn't? Lesson learned.
Second.
You can't, you can't, you can't talk, is when you have to...
Why do you think I said way over here? Okay, that has been made and seconded by June. Is there any other nomination? Doesn't look like there is. Jason?
Yes.
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's Mascoma Bank.
Do you like to be called Rob, or Bob, or Robert?
Rob.
Okay. Okay. Appoint voting members to the WNESU board. So, I'd just like to speak to this for a second, because this is a huge commitment. The, to be on the SU board means that you've got, you have two meetings, usually it tends to be on the same week. And the SU is in charge of a lot of stuff in our school system. So it's transportation, it's special ed, it's food. What else am I missing?
Business office.
Yeah, well, we knew that. I mean, it's part of a lot of our school, you know, programs in our school. And so, I can hear Jack Brier, you know, Jack Brier always said the chair should be on the SU board, because when you have the executive board, you know, you're kinda got your hands on everything, so you know what's going on, if, if there's some sort of special meeting. I fought him a little bit when I thought I couldn't handle one more meeting, but it does make sense to have your chair on the SU board, and then we need two other people. But it, it really needs to be two people that can commit to that time. It's a, it, it's a little bit of time to be part of that board and know that you're, you know, being a driven member, I guess. So before we start nominating anybody, I just wanted to get that out there, because it isn't, it is, tends to be on the same week. I'm going to ask, when we do the SU board meeting tomorrow, tomorrow night, right now it runs on the same night as the Westminster Select Board Meeting. So I'm hoping maybe I can get them to switch the Wednesdays, so that it's not on the same, because you can't participate in any select board meetings, because it's the same day.
May I, may I address the chair?
Absolutely.
They, yes, you are correct. They were previously held during the fourth week of the month, and I've noticed that these meetings oftentimes have been held during the second week of the month. So I'm hopeful that maybe they could get straightened out. Maybe the third week of the month, that way we can say the third week of the month?
So by policy, it's supposed to be the fourth Wednesday of the month?
The SU meeting?
The SU meeting.
Okay.
You are correct. By policy, and somehow, prior to my tenure, it was moved to the Wednesday, the third Wednesday. And so that was gonna be a discussion point for tomorrow.
Okay.
Select Board meets to the second and fourth Thursday, uh, Wednesdays for Westminster.
And so that might have been why it got moved to the third, which is, the other, the other piece that, and it's a little later, but we've asked the other boards if they could move their primary meeting to the, the first half of the month, as opposed to this past year, it was in the second half of the month. That way, there, all those meetings aren't in the same week, the main ones. And so that, if we do need to have an alternate meeting date, we would then double up that at that time. So, so you, you tend to meet the second Monday, correct? The second?
The second Monday and fourth Monday.
So, so we... So I know I'm, I'm going a little ahead of myself with Kay, but that's gonna be our, our ask, is that we could have the second be your primary meeting, and then whatever works out for having the board, the SU board, we can, we can adjust that.
So I'm not, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, because you get two board members that don't know how to say no, and are probably gonna get sucked into a select board meeting too. So that's... So in saying that, is there anybody who has an interest in being on the SU board? Jason?
Yeah, I don't mind doing it. I, I think that, um, I did it once, and it does offer a lot. I was interested in the, the food part of it with my background, and, you know, Harley does a great job. And so if, if, if that's what you wish, I, I don't mind.
We need three, correct, Andy?
Correct.
Does anybody else have an interest in being on the SU board? I'm seeing none. Could I have a nomination for June and Jason to be on the SU board, and Molly?
I was just about to say that. I know David did a really good job.
Molly, I would like to move that we appoint Bannock, Jason Terry, and June Streeter as our voting reps for the WNESU board.
Can I have a second?
I could second.
Jason, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Darcy?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Tanya? Rob? Appoint representatives to the Technical Centers Advisory Council. So we have two tech centers that we work with, River Valley and Wyndham.
Wyndham Regional.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Mike Stack for River Valley Tech, and...
Margot, Margot used to do it for Wyndham.
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate David Clark for Wyndham. Yeah.
Wyndham?
Oh, whichever one isn't taken.
So is there, do you want?
So answer your question. I think that Mike Stack would do a fine job on the, uh...
River Valley.
River Valley Tech Center Board. I did, did email you to tell you that I am involved in support staff negotiations up there, and suggested that possibly we do a handoff in June, when the River Valley Tech Center Board reorganizes. And my logic for that was that if, if, number one, if Mike's willing to serve on River Valley Tech Center Board, which I hope he is, that, then that would give us a couple of meetings where we can both go.
Right.
And do, I think, a little bit more of a seamless handoff, instead of just throwing them in the fire. Okay. Now, backing up the Wyndham Regional Career Center, that's where I started, and I, if you need a rep down there, then I would be happy to serve.
Okay. So does, is everybody okay with letting David hand that off in June? I think that, you know, Mike, you know, from what little bit I've heard from you and read, I mean, you're, you're, that's what you're kind of looking for, is to be able to...
Yeah.
Get involved in that part of the education for the kids, so...
Yeah. I've got a bit of a relationship with them already, so, yeah.
Yep.
I think it's kind of a natural.
So can I have a motion to appoint Mike Stack to the River Valley Tech with David until June, and then David will hand off in June? And David will be the Wyndham, tell me again?
Regional person.
Regional Career Center rep?
I'll make that motion. Don't have to say it again.
In a second?
So...
Thank you. Jason, how do you vote?
Yes.
Darcy?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Appoint truant officer. This always makes a lot of a conversation.
Well, we would, we're asking that the Wyndham County Sheriff be appointed. That way, we can have consistency. We're using Wyndham County Sheriff for all the other towns or districts, so therefore it'll provide some consistency. I've spoken with the sheriff already. We can bundle the whole piece with the same, the same contract that the high school uses for, for coverage of like games and events and stuff like that, so it's, it, it doesn't muddy anything. And it's a, it's a pay as need fee, so it's not a, we're not paying any money out until we actually need to send someone out. So, and I, John, I don't know how often, it's not very often we're using...
We, we were using BFPD, and it was to deliver the things like 15-day letters or a visitation around, you know, kids that hadn't been in school for a long time, but not, I don't, don't believe it was probably more than 10 or 12 in the whole year that...
And, and, yeah, and after, at the beginning of last year, the, the person who used to do it out of Bellas Falls Police Department had retired. Yeah. And they're now living in Rutland, and so they don't come over here that often, so we, that's why we tried to go with the sheriff this year.
So, I'm gonna say this. David and June know what I'm gonna say. The town of Westminster has had a terrible time with Wyndham County Sheriff, getting coverage, getting him to come to anything. If you call him, they don't show up. So, little gun shy about Wyndham County Sheriff, but if you think you have a relationship and can make it work, but I'm telling you that they have not been reliable. And they, they, I mean, they owe the town of Westminster hours and hours that they just, they're just not there.
They're citing staff issues, like, like we all, most of the poppin' world is.
So I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, we're on your third meeting here, so two other schools have already picked, three have already picked Wyndham County Sheriff, but I'm telling you, as a Westminster resident, it's, it don't work.
Yeah, we're, we're not able to use Vermont, you know, state police.
Nope.
And, you know, with, as I said, with the Bellas Falls Police Department, it, it's been a challenge for us as well, so... And they're just understaffed, it's the same thing, so... But when we have a truancy issue in, you know, in Athens or Grafton, we only can have Wyndham County do it, and so we have to do that, so...
Molly, I'd like to offer a motion to speak. And my motion is to appoint Wyndham County Sheriff's Department as truancy officers. And if I get a second, then I would like to speak to it.
I'm gonna give David a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And I, also, I think June would endorse this as well. The Westminster experience with Wyndham County Sheriff's Department has not been favorable the last few years for exactly the reasons that Molly has just cited. However, I do understand the point made about what I would refer to as efficiencies of scale here, Andy, but I do need to make a point, and that is that any duly sworn law officer in the state of Vermont carries those powers with him to any corner of the state of Vermont. And in that regard, although they probably wouldn't want to do it, we could appoint the Burlington PD as our truancy officers, which is why we utilized Bellas Falls in the past, because their police powers do extend to all 14 counties in the state of Vermont. But yes, I think it's much better to, in this case, go with the flow and note the fact that there has been some unhappiness with the performance of the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department. And I would hope that if you do have problems, that it would come back to the supervisory union table, so you can take the counsel of all your boards.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Let's take a vote. And we have a motion on the table to appoint Wyndham County Sheriff as our truant officer. Jason?
Yes.
Darcy?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Wyndham County it is. Appoint warrant signers. So warrant signers are two people? Is that right? That go to, you get an email from...
Trish?
Trish. And you have to get, so she wants them signed within 24 to 48 hours? Don't I understand?
We're, I've checked with the business office. We'd like to get the, you know, push the email out on, on Wednesday, get warrant signers in on Thursday, only because it does, at times, if, if whomever the warrant signer is, has a question on something that can hold up all the checks, and that holds up all the checks at times. And we've run into some issues with some vendors, looking for their checks and whatnot, so we're trying to get it done a little earlier. So it would, the ask would be to be available for Thursday, sign, so that we can get checks out by Friday.
So Deb and Jason have been the ones doing it? Is that right?
Yeah, that is correct.
I did a couple. I did two, I think.
And you can have, the other boards have, have just also, they've appointed two people, but then either of those, because we do need to have two signatures, if, if anyone's not available, then we would just have a list, and we can get any board member who's available to come in. In the past, when we've done that, it hasn't.
I believe under statute that warrants need to be signed by majority of the board, unless that board moves to designate a different number of signers. And I believe we could designate two signers, and then the chair, if we want to do it that way, could appoint those signers. So with all due respect...
So if somebody was gone on vacation, I could appoint someone else to sign those?
Well, you, you could, but the point is that any, any member of the board is empowered under statute to sign.
Yeah.
Statute says you need a majority of your board to sign a warrant, but that you can appoint an alternate number, as long as you take a, you know, motion that's carried by your board. And I would like to offer a motion that the Union High School Board appoint two signers and authorize the chair to appoint those signers on behalf of the board.
Is everybody okay with that? So Jason, you're okay with me appointing two?
Yes.
Darcy? June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Tanya? Rob?
Yes.
So I would like to appoint Mike and myself to sign the warrants. I think it's really important that it's, I've been doing this long enough, so I know what to look for, and you've got a finance background, so that's why I'm, that's why you picked the lucky straw on that one.
Your budget committee.
I will, I will commend Jason for doing a spectacular job. Probably, probably the business office hated to see him coming, but he really, he really was thorough. If he didn't understand something, he asked a question, and, and that was, he did a good job last year.
I apologize for making people wait, but I wanted to get answers before signing, putting my name on something.
Very important.
And they were really good about either getting me the answer, or finding me the policy, or we made a policy.
You should see the email they sent me, though. No, you did a good job, so thank you very much. And I think that we should switch it every year, because we don't want people to start getting, you know, just, oh, that's no big deal, of course they did it right. When you've been through, a few of us have been through in the business office, you watch them, because there's been some mistakes, so... Not with you, Andy. Okay, so we got Mike and Molly. Set time, date, and location of regular monthly meetings. So we're gonna do the second Monday. At the high school. So we always, we used to pick a room, and now we just say the high school, because we never know where we're gonna be. All I can hear is that security guy that we saw in the Saxon River Elementary School when we were walking around, and he said, don't ever be in a room where your backs to your people.
Yeah, the only, the only thing we could do here is if we could switch this room around, like then, for sure, we're, you know, always facing that way, but, I mean, the high school hasn't set up this way. But the only other reason why we say not to pick a room is because we never know if we're, you know, we might put it somewhere, but then if it needs to move...
Right.
We've got some flexibility, if we could do some signage and whatnot, but...
So I think if we just say high school, everybody's okay with that? And we'll make a sign, so you can find us? David, you had your hand up?
I have my hand up, because I think it would be a good exercise to get out of this room and back in the library. I think it's a much more dignified meeting place. I think it's also a far better room in terms of, you know, dealing with interested members of the public, that can number anywhere from one to about 85, and they will fit in the library, because we've had them, you remember it. So I, I would hope, and it does not need to be in a motion, it's just a request from a board member, that we get out of this room.
Yeah, I don't know how we ended up here, but I like the library better. I like it way better. And I also, you know, when you start thinking about security, if we can get out from behind those, you know, we're not, if we turn this thing around and something happens, we can't get out.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the, the main reason for getting out of the library was sound, especially when we had Back TV here all the time, you know, picking up recordings, and then even last night, Tara even, you know, we were using a, we were recording The Rockingham, and sound wasn't great, like, and, and so that's the biggest issue there. I think we can find a workaround for that. And then it's just, I think the other was, this was always set up, and so it was convenient as opposed to doing it. But I don't have a problem with the library, so we can make that, yeah.
Thank you.
We can make that happen.
Molly, you have a question?
Yes.
So with, is it just the one meeting a month? I just, we have a lot that's going on.
Oh, so I'm sorry. I got, I swear I got this in. It's the second Monday and the fourth Monday.
Okay.
So if we don't need a meeting on the fourth, you know, that's something, we gotta look at what's happening, but yeah, there's a lot of times when we need that second meeting.
We haven't had...
We haven't had a regular meeting in forever.
Feels like forever.
Yeah, we we have a lot going on and a lot of moving parts, I think it's important that we get to two until at least.
Till at least I take my camper to overarching for three months.
I love that.
Molly, you wanna keep it at six thirty?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, no, I just.
Yep.
Is there another meeting before, or?
No.
Okay.
During budget season, there is.
Yeah, we might have like a building and grounds before the regular meeting, you know, so that we might start at five thirty and then this following.
But there isn't another, we don't, there's not another. Only for the reorg did we try and stack them, so otherwise we we, they all have their own days. So you can have as much time as you need.
Establish a newspaper to be used to announce school board functions and activities.
Uh, we we try to use the Bradbury Reformer as our main.
And why is that?
Because they're the only one.
They're also the most widely circulated.
Eagle Times, the Shopper.
So we've tried the Shopper, and the Shopper sometimes doesn't move quick enough for when we need to do something. The E, we've had a lot of, sometimes this is the longest part of our reorganization meeting, because, isn't it, David knows. Because everybody, a lot of people ask for the Eagle because they like the paper better, but it's not circulated in the whole area where Bradbury Reformer can be, that's why we picked Bradbury. Because it's really for, like, if something's going on and we need to have a special meeting or something, we need to get something in there, and we only have a certain amount of time to do it.
But can't you get the Eagle Times on Facebook or the internet, just like you can Bradbury Reformer? Do they even print papers anymore?
Yep, you you can get it on Facebook, yeah. I mean, you don't get, when you go on Facebook, I mean, you you get their articles.
No, I mean, you can do a a internet subscription to the Eagle Times and and just like Bradbury Reformer.
And there's way more comments when you see it on Facebook.
Yeah, there is, true.
You sure skipped right by that Facebook thing? So I need a motion to use Bradbury Reformer as our newspaper to announce school board functions and activities. So moved, Mike?
Yeah, moved.
Second? David, second? Jason?
Yes.
Darcy? June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
I understand you, but I also know that sometimes you're gonna pick your battles. Okay, so adopt Robert's Rules of Order.
For small board.
For small boards. That gets away from needing a second. I need to scut, will you make that motion, Jason?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Jason, how do you vote?
Yes.
Darcy?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay. Here's the fun part, committee assignments.
Wait, you skipped N.
I did? Oh, that's because I didn't update Mike, what is N?
Appoint position, or open position can appoint at this time.
Okay, so I have, I'm unprepared. I had it on my iPad and didn't bring it in, but Brenda sent us a letter and wanted to be a board member, she didn't, she had all her paperwork ready to go into Rockingham and just life happened and she didn't get it there, and she would love to stay on the board. And my recommendation is that we let her still be on the board. So I need a motion to do that, and.
I make a motion to appoint Brenda Parkes to the remainder of, oh, okay. For this year.
Sorry, Brenda.
Do we need a second still, or no?
We do not need a second now.
Yes.
Oh, hold on a minute, hold on a minute, discussion please.
Yes.
Um, did you receive any other letters of interest?
I did not.
Oh, okay.
That's good. No, I did not.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Yes.
Brenda, welcome back aboard.
So Brenda, we'll need you to get sworn in again.
Yeah, you'll have to do all the fun stuff.
So you can just be part of the peanut gallery for the rest of the time still.
So, committee assignments, building and grounds, if you guys haven't figured out yet, that's kind of my passion. I'm gonna ask Mike if he would join me, and then anyone else who would like to be part of that. I'm asking Mike because he's been in a lot of the Harvard rant meetings and has an idea of what we're looking for, and building and grounds could be all of us or few of us, it's a, so, right now, in this school, it's a very, very important committee because we've got a lot to do. We've got a lot to do to do things that haven't been done for twenty years. There's some money set aside to do some renovating in the school, get some, you know, get rid of some of this nineteen seventies dark brown stuff all over here and make it look really nice. And is both bonds gonna prove, so we have money to fix our driveway, we have money to fix our roof. We're working on an HVAC system that seems like we've been working on forever and we're not getting it done, so this is my, this is my deal.
We're not currently under a motion, but I would just like to discuss procedure here. I believe, and I think it would be wise if we asked the superintendent of schools to check with council, but I believe that once again, under statute, committees need to have a quorum in order to meet, and also, obviously, if a committee's gonna meet and wants to take an action, then that would require quorums as well. And I simply want to point out that good quorum numbers for committees of a ten-member board, generally, three people or five people, irregardless of whether I'm on your committee or not, I'm gonna show up. But I I would hope that we could get, you know, an indication of how much interest there is tonight. So we know if it's a three-member committee or a five-member committee.
Okay. Jason's interested. So that gives us four, give me one more and we'll have a five-member. David? Okay. So can I have a motion for Molly, Mike, Rob, Jason, and David to be your building and grounds committee?
So moved.
Good second.
Jason?
Yes.
Darcy? June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Right, Rob?
Yes.
Okay, so anybody can come to these that is part of, you know, part of our group. We're gonna try to meet before our regular meeting, so we'll meet, you know, Andy and I try to plug this into five or five thirty on Monday, and you'll get an agenda sent to you, you'll know what's gonna happen, but.
There is one tomorrow, correct?
There is one tomorrow.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, we're meeting with the architect, correct?
Correct.
This is, this is a big one.
We're meeting here tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yes, yep. You go to that one?
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Three thirty.
Yeah, is it three thirty?
Hang on, let me check.
Yeah.
They told me three, so I'd be here on time.
It's, it's three for Molly, three thirty.
Budget and finance. Go ahead, Andy.
No, I I had an email from Priscilla, because she couldn't be here tonight, but asking that her desire, that that's a committee she would like to be on.
Okay.
And just. I'd be interested in that.
Okay.
Molly, can I speak to that? So I wasn't on the committee last year, but I was at every meeting, and, you know, I I really found, I I really would like to actually be on the committee this year, but I also think that, you know, I I think David has a lot of great, great ideas, and I I really hope that he would consider being on it as well. Because we got, we want to move us into the future, you know, with what we're trying to do, so.
And I'd like to just ask if any of the, you know, newer members, are you, are you, the budget's a huge thing, it's hu, you know, it's a huge part of what we do. You know, if you have an interest in that, I mean, there's other ways we can get you involved, believe me. But, you know, speak up if it's something, it is a commitment. Probably sick of hearing me say that, but budget committee, when it happens, it's, it's a commitment, it's, it feels like sometimes we don't have enough meetings, because we have a lot of questions, and then it's two weeks before we have another meeting, and it's a commitment, and it happens in the fall. So if, you know, if you get a kid that's playing a fall sport or something, sometimes that's hard, because you gotta, you know, wave which one you're gonna go to, but that's just a heads up, because I've been there, so. The budget committee is the same thing as building and grounds, we have to have a quorum. So if we have three people or five people, we could have three people, and then everybody can show up if they want to, and you can all have input on what we do, and we really don't, we present a budget to the whole board, so we're not really making, we're not accepting the budget. We're just bringing it to the board as a whole to accept, so it's not like we're accepting something that you guys aren't gonna see, but it is something that we, something that we do. So I've got Mike, Molly, and Jason. That would give us a quorum, if anybody else is very passionate about it, speak.
June was at every meeting last year, too.
Yeah, but I'm not going to, I I might show up, but I'm not gonna commit, I got another one, I'm.
So can I have, David, are you?
I would prefer to be a non-voting participant.
So can I have a motion to assign Mike, Molly, and Jason to the budget committee?
So moved.
Oh, forgot Priscilla.
If we do Priscilla, then we're gonna need another person.
So she can come, but I don't really wanna stick, we've had times when we haven't had a quorum.
I I've.
I'm gonna stick with three this time.
Okay. So you have Mike, Jason, and?
Me.
You, okay.
And anybody can come, it'll be, everybody gets emailed when we have a meeting, so it's not. Okay, so we have a motion to assign Mike, Molly, and Jason to the budget committee, Jason, any vote?
Yes.
Darcy? June?
Yes.
David? Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, teacher and support staff negotiations, this is two groups, right?
Uh, well, we only, for, next year will be hopefully going into negotiations only with the teachers, uh, because we have a, we're in the first year, we're in the first year of a four-year contract with the support staff, so.
I need somebody to raise their hand, because I am not the right person to be on that committee.
I would love to be, I was on the support staff last year.
So you're gonna be on teacher negotiation this time?
Yes.
We need two members. Just one?
Just one.
Can I have a motion to assign June in those teacher negotiations?
So moved. I'll offer this second.
Thank you. Jason?
Yes.
Yes.
Darcy? June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Rob?
Yes.
That is a huge commitment, I just want to tell you.
The support staff was a pretty big one.
C I P team representative.
So that's the Continuous Improvement Plan, that the state's been playing around, they've dropped SIP, but they bring it back every once in a while, they they also call it the Recovery Plan, as I said at the other boards. Hoping that we're out of recovery at this point and moving forward, but basically, it's our, it's our long-term plans of, you know, our initiatives that we're moving with, like work-based, nature-based, whether it's, you know, looking, it's more of the SU, but then you're also gonna have one for this building. So you have what what knee asks, but also with efficiency-based learning and stuff like that.
So we haven't signed Darcy, Brenda, or Tanya for anything?
And and.
I'll do it.
Darcy, you're a good sport. Do we just need one person? Says div.
Yeah, I I mean, typically, you only need the one person, but it, again, all of these are open to every, uh, what other boards have done is, a lot of these named like a point person, because they're not as large as you all, and so therefore.
How often is that?
Like at the SU, we're we're gonna be looking at it quarterly. I don't know, as far as the high school, with with their plan, I don't know how often we get to that. My recollection, when I, when I was at.
It's for a while there, but then it just kind of faded away, yeah.
It it, so they were, there were more district-level plans, and then as we went into COVID, it became more of an SU kind of driven piece. And my my recollection, when I used to be a building administrator in another district, was we met once a year to go over that SIP, and some board members joined us, it was a day-long project, though. But we're, what I'm hoping to do at at the SU levels, that that would be kind of a, like I say, a quarterly piece, so we would just keep that going, so.
So I would like to have a motion to assign Darcy as our SIP team representative.
So moved.
June, move that? Jason, how do you vote?
Yes.
Darcy, how do you vote?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Policy, Darcy, you are the representative. Policy committee, Priscilla kills the policies, I mean, she's right on them. So we gotta have Priscilla on the policy, because she's just, she does a really good job of them. It is a meeting that, a lot of them are, a lot of them are boilerplate policies, it just needs to be updated, and some of them are, you know, some of them are maybe gonna change something if, you know, we're not careful and don't bring this policy up. You know, it's, it can be as much as a policy on how many credits a kid needs to have to graduate, to, you know, what flag we fly, or what, you know. It's all this stuff, so it's.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to.
Go ahead.
So what we've tried to do is, many of the policies are the same for every single district, and so we try to kind of have a, an SU policy committee, but then at the same time, if there's something very specific for the high school, then you would have a committee that you could either ad hoc, that you could pull together, or or a committee of the whole to discuss like credits, because obviously, credits are not anything that an elementary school is addressing or dealing, so.
Yeah.
There are very specific ones to the high school that we would maybe filter through that SU, but then bring here for a much more granular look.
David?
Once again, I would like to offer a motion and speak to it if I get a second.
Absolutely.
And the motion is to appoint Priscilla Lambert as the high school policy chair. And if I get a second, I'll speak to it and explain. Oh, right, thank you, sorry, okay, just forget about that second business then. All right, Andy, I think pretty much nailed it right there, when he said that almost all of our policy work is done at the supervisor reunion level. And therefore, I think here that a, a policy committee is essentially entirely subsumed by the work of the SU policy committee. And, once again, to follow up on the comment that you made, I personally do believe that it is time to have a discussion about things like credits and graduation requirements, and also, if we're going to take any substantive steps to see if we can, I'm front-running my director's comment here, but reinvent this school for very high performance, in which case, that's really, you know, board discussion, and not simply, here, figure this out at the, at the policy level. So I'm, you know, made the motion that we appoint Priscilla as the policy chair, and obviously, if we're gonna have discussion. Policy chair, and obviously if we're gonna have discussion, um, it's really, I think, a board discussion at this point where. Our specific needs are not, you know, essentially the same as what everybody else in SU needs. And all we need is Priscilla as a liaison to tell us what to do.
So, just a little more discussion with David, because I think it's, it's important and we have done a terrible job at it this year is. There are some policies that we, as a high school board, need to take care of and we. So yes, the SU takes care of most of them, it's a blanket policy for the whole SU, but. There are a few, and I think we need to at least have, you know, something on our agenda. With the policies we wanna look at for the high school, you know, at least once a quarter or something, so we're staying on top of. You know, getting them updated for us. Um, you know, there's things, you know, that's part of our job as a board member, is to, is to take care of the policies and. And, you know, help direct where we want the school, you know, to, to be looking forward to. And, um, yeah, I agree, I think there's some we need to, we need to seriously look at, because, um. You know, I've, uh, since you mentioned the credits, cause I had no idea, um. You know, that we were looking at so many credits, and then when I look at these kids that wanna go to tech. And they're worried about, you know, whether they're getting all these other foolish classes done, because. Honestly, they just wanna go to the tech and learn how to, whatever they wanna do, whether they wanna be a nurse or a mechanic. Or a forestry management, you know, it's all those things that is really important to make them, you know. Valuable citizens, so I think that's, that's a very important.
Andy, is there certain standards that, state standards that we will, you know, in terms of credits?
Twenty-one credits.
So the state, the state mandates twenty-one credits, and then, um, every school can add on.
And we're twenty-eight.
We're twenty.
Yeah, and so, a student has the opportunity for thirty-two credits.
Full for four years.
For four years. Yeah, that's why I said they have the opportunity, um, you know, and, you know, I, in, in my. My travels, I've seen kids even get more, because they'll do, you know, there, there's always those kids that will do a little extra type of stuff, but. Um, but yeah, so, and then there's, yeah, you have to have so many math, so many English, so many.
Right.
There's things like, um, you know, I'm very familiar with a young lady that went to Brewer Valley Tech. For the nursing program, and then she had a class she wanted to take here, but she couldn't take it, it was a math class. So it was an extra math class that she thought she needed for college, and she couldn't take it, because they forced her to take health. But she'd already gotten her LNA at the tech center. But we made her take health instead of taking the math class that she wanted to have. So those kinda things are things that we need to work on.
Yep.
Because that shouldn't have happened, it, you know, so anyways. So let's have a motion, we have a motion to have Priscilla be in the Bellows Falls Union High School. Share of the policy committee, that right, did I get that right? Jason?
Yes.
Darcy? June?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Brenda? And Rob?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, new business for discussion, if any. Anybody got anything? We're going to meet, um, next Monday, so we'll have, we'll have time for another meeting. Um, any old business? No? Director's comments, Jason?
I, I actually don't have any tonight, we're having a meeting next, uh.
Monday.
Next Monday, so I will, until then.
Okay. Darcy?
Hi, you don't have any this time, thank you.
June?
I do, um, first, I'd like to thank all of you new members, I'm looking very forward to a productive year. Um, and I hope that will happen, um, and second, um. I'm stating my opinion, um, I'm not sure who made the decision for the whole school. Mandatory attendance at the, um, musical today, you're in town. Um, but we have, in my opinion, missed a lot of school this second semester already. Um, and then tomorrow is a half-scheduled half-day, because of our ninth grader, our eighth graders are coming up to. Um, and I called the school yesterday, after I received the email that it was. With the alternative schedule and that we were leaving at eleven and be back at two, um. I called the school and questioned what it was about, um, and I was told to Google it. Which I did, and what I saw was not, I was not impressed with. Um, but I then called the school back and asked them if they would send it all email out. Um, giving a brief description of the musical, so that we were a little bit more transparent. Um, personally, I received a few calls, um, and I was told that that could happen, and then it never happened. So I was a little disappointed with that, um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Molly, very briefly, I'm sorry, Zoom is not here tonight, because we do have one member absent. Who possibly could have joined us through the Zoom, and it has been fairly common. Uh, since Zoom has become established presence at school board meetings, that we do have. Members of the public who show up in Zoom, I'm hoping that we can resume that, uh, going forward. Now, um, I would, I wanna commend, um, high school administration for. Keeping the wheels turning here, um, you know, particularly during, uh, the COVID pandemic. I do have concerns that we don't seem to be planning very efficiently for the next event. Which will come down the pike sooner or later, and probably cause us to go into a remote situation. I did take a peek at Compass, Compass has a, uh, I believe it's a six-week. Uh, program to introduce students to, uh, online learning. And I think we really need to start thinking about whether we are going to address, um, online learning as a. Uh, component of twenty-first century, um, education, which obviously you can tell, I think we should be. Um, but, big picture, big picture for me is, uh. BFUHS has been running right around sixteenth best high school in Vermont for a number of years. And I very strongly believe that it's time that we start talking about how we are going to. Um, improve on those, uh, outcomes. And I'm hopeful that we will be able to devote some time, be a pretty good use of the second meeting of the month. To start talking about, you know, what we're doing well, what we're doing, which is really anachronistic. In the twenty-first century, twenty-eight credits comes immediately to my mind. Um, and we get serious about, um, trying to turn. This school into one of the best, if not the very best, high school in Vermont. I really think that it can be done, um, if, uh, leadership and board. Uh, resolve themselves to do it and are willing to commit the time and energy to make it happen. That's my director's comment.
Thank you, Mike?
Yeah, I'm very happy to be here and look forward to working with everybody. Um, I have a question, and that is, you know, as a new board member, um, you know, gonna be on the budget committee. How do I get data, how do I, you know, um, work either with the finance office of the school? What's the best way for me to start collecting, I mean, cause that's how I make decisions based on data?
Jim.
And so, what's the, what's the?
Right.
What's the, you know, the etiquette of contacting or being put together with. Somebody that can provide me data on the financials.
So he can talk directly to Jim, right? I mean, without.
Am I allowed to speak?
I don't run a tough meeting.
I'll put you in ca- uh, connection with Jim Vazina.
Yeah.
And, um, he's done a lot of, uh, he sat down with a lot of different board members and gone through, go, you know, he's, he's an open book and. Yeah, just sit down with him one-on-one and go through some things, and he can walk you through a lot of that stuff, so.
Don't take this the wrong way, Andy, but he's the best thing that's happened to our business office.
He is, no, I, I, I don't take that the wrong way.
He is just, he's really fixed a lot of, a lot of things that made us look really dumb. And he's, he's really easy to talk to and, you know, he's just a good guy.
Good. Yep.
Tanya?
I am all set.
Brenda?
Thank you for bringing me back on and welcome to the new.
Same as Mike, I'm, I'm excited to be working with you all, and, uh, you know, as I have met most of you. Um, this is the school I went to, nineteen ninety graduated, so, um, you know. Some things have stayed the same, some things are different, so, um. I think the buildings and grounds for me is a, is a big thing that I'd like to be, you know, heavily involved in, so, looking forward to working with you all.
I would like to thank all the members, cause this is a big commitment and thank you for entrusting it in me again this year. Um, I am super excited about building grounds and, um. You know, we got some money to get us going on stuff and, and I wanna, I wanna really, um. Just wanna make everybody so proud that this is what it looks like, you know, presentation, you know, getting some signage and get some things cleaned up and. Um, you know, everybody's sick of me talking about, look up and see how bad some of the ceiling tile look and, um, it's just. You know, it's presentation, I grew up on a dairy farm, my father used to say, don't put that broken tractor in front of the barn. Presentation is ninety-eight percent of what we do, and, you know. Everybody used to go by and take pictures of the barn, I didn't see the junk pile behind the barn, but what we saw is a beautiful red building with my mother's flowers and. It just makes a difference. And attract. But it is, um, I'm just excited about, I, we've talked and talked and talked about stuff and we never. Act, and I'm, I'm ready to go, I'm, we need to act on some of this stuff and just, just do a better job. So, um, we have a building grounds committee meeting tomorrow at, for Molly, three, everybody else, three thirty. Um, WNESU meeting at six thirty, for anybody that's on that or who wants to attend. And our next meeting is next Monday, the twenty-seventh, at six thirty. Thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-five.